All right, everybody. Is it okay for us to get started? From our host?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Kenneth. We'll go ahead and call to order the April 9th, 2020 Metropolitan Nashville Planning Commission teleconference meeting to order. Our first order of business is to take the roll call for each member. And so this is our second teleconference meeting. So as we work through the kinks, hopefully these will get smoother. So for each commissioner that I call on the phone, if you'll say you're here, once I call, say, roll call, Commissioner Farr, are you present yet? We'll move on to Commissioner Gobble, are you present?
Present.
Commissioner Haynes, are you present?
Present.
Commissioner Johnson, are you present?
Present.
Council Lady Murphy, are you present?
Present.
Commissioner Sims, are you present?
Present.
Commissioner Tibbs, are you present?
Present.
All right, we have a quorum and Director, we have a quorum, so that's good. I want to welcome everybody to the call, all the commissioners, staff, and the public. Now, we need to do a little bit of legal work before we start our call like we did last time. And so I believe our attorney is on the line. Alex, are you there?
Good afternoon, Chairman Atkins, this is Quan Po from the Metro League Department. We, as you all know, Tennessee law requires that all meetings of any metropolitan government function to be held in person. However, due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, the governor has issued an executive order that will allow municipalities to host meetings, has temporarily suspended the rules to allow for meetings to be held electronically or telephonically. However, in order to do that, the board would have to determine that the business that it needs to conduct is essential and adopt a, pass a motion to that effect. So I would, if the chair would entertain such motion before we can proceed.
So I'm gonna, we're gonna, so when I say on this call, raise your hand, it is an icon on the device that looks like a hand. And so whenever I refer to, you know, please raise your hand if you want to speak, or you can also interrupt during the call, but in order to make motions, if you guys will, if the commissioners will raise your icon hands on your device, and then I'll call on you to make the motion. So the first motion is to move that this meeting be electronic. And the one thing that we take very seriously, I know all of the commissioners take this seriously, is the health of the citizens of Nashville, all of our staff members, and the commissioners. And we take that very seriously, and that is the reason why we're having these calls. And also to make sure that your safety is the number one concern. And so we believe that that is important. We believe, and the motion is also to suspend, Quan, let me, in this particular motion, we'll have to suspend our normal rules to allow us to do that. Is that correct? That'll be part of this motion?
That is correct. You would have to suspend your rules. Thank you for calling, Mr. Chair. You would have to suspend your rules to allow that. And also, I would recommend that in that same motion, that any rule that would conflict with us having an electronic or telephonic meeting also be suspended for the duration of the time that the governor's executive order is in place.
So that, that's a proper explanation, and that will be included in the motion of any of the commissioners that are going to make the motion. So we are ready for a motion, I believe. Is that correct, Quan? We ready? You feel good about it?
We are ready.
Okay, and so commissioners, if, let me know who would like to make that motion. And Commissioner Gobble, you are recognized.
I move that, I move, I move we do it.
And that's a proper motion of the motion that's been explained for holding electronic meeting and suspending any rules that conflict with doing so. And is Counsel Lady Murphy, would you like to make a second?
I would like to second.
That's a proper motion. And then now we're going to do a roll call. Oh, excuse me, is there any discussion? And I'm looking, please raise your icon hand if there's any discussion, or let me know out loud. Seeing no discussion, we are now going to vote on the motion to have a telephonic meeting. And I'm going to go through the roll call, and you can say aye or nay or abstain. So Commissioner Gobble?
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Counsel Lady Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
And is Vice Chair Farr on yet? No, she's not on. I'm looking at my list, she's not on. And so the ayes have it. Eight ayes and no nays, and the motion passes. We are on to, we are now on to the adoption of the agenda, which was sent out to you prior, and it's been listed publicly. So we're on item C of our agenda, and that's the adoption of the agenda. We're going to do the same thing. If you would like to make a motion, raise your icon hand to adopt the agenda. And Commissioner Tibbs, you're recognized.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Counsel Lady Murphy?
Second.
That's proper second. Any discussion? Please raise your icon hand, or say that you would like to discuss anything. And seeing none, I'm going to go through the roll call again, which I know that's pretty cumbersome, but we have to do it this way. Commissioner Gobble?
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Counsel Lady Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
And there are eight ayes, no nays, and the agenda that was sent out to you and made public is adopted. So now we are on to the approval of the March 26, 2020 minutes, which were also sent to all the commissioners. And I hope that everybody had time to look at those. And so we are now on to the adoption of those particular minutes. And we will need a motion to adopt the minutes. And so if you'll raise your icon hand on your device. And Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Chairman. I make a motion to adopt, approve the March 26 minutes.
That's a proper motion, and is there a second? We have Commissioner Sims?
I second it.
Perfect, thank you. And is there any discussion? I don't, if you would raise your icon hand, or discuss by voice? Seeing no discussion, we'll do roll call. And Commissioner Gobble?
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Counsel Lady Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
And the chair's an aye, so that's eight ayes, zero nos, and the minutes are adopted. So now we are on to item E, oh, item E, which is the recognition of the council members. And I think either Greg, or George, or the Director, is there anyone at our normal meeting place?
Can the staff at Sunny West please address if there's anyone there, any council member present to speak?
Yes, this is Sean Shepherd with the planning staff. We are present in Sunny West, and there are no council members here wishing to speak.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to item F, which is the items for deferral or withdrawal. And I believe that Lisa is going to, from our distinguished staff, is going to present items for deferral.
The following items are for deferral. Item 1A, 2019 CP 013002, on page seven of your agenda. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 23 meeting. Item 1B, 2008 SP 002004. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 23 Planning Commission meeting. Item 2A, 2020 CP 006001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 11 Planning Commission meeting. Item 2B, the associated case, 2020Z 052PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 11 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 5A, 2020 CP 012001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 23 Planning Commission meeting. Item 5B, the associated case on page nine of your agenda, 2015 SP 005010. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 23 Planning Commission meeting. Item 6, 2020 CP 001, I'm sorry, 2020 CP 00001. The Major and Collector Street Plan Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 23 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 7, 2018 SP 027001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July 23 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 11, 2020 SP 012001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 23 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 14, 2020 SP 015001. That is on page 11 of your agenda. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 28 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 15, 2020 SP 018001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 14 Planning Commission meeting. Item 16A, 2020 SP 019001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 23 Planning Commission meeting. The associated case on page 12, item 16B, 8487P 007. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 23 Planning Commission meeting. Item 17, 2019 S 086001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 23 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 20, 2020 S 039001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 23 Planning Commission meeting. Item 21 on page 13 of your agenda, 2020 S 054001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 23 Planning Commission meeting. Item 24, 2020 S 064001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 23 Planning Commission meeting. Item 25, 2020 S 066001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 14 Planning Commission meeting. Item 26, 2019 HP 001001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 23 Planning Commission meeting. Item 27, 2005 UD 006043. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 23 Planning Commission meeting. Item 28, 12383P 002. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 23 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 31 on page 13 of your agenda, 2020Z, I'm sorry, page 15 of your agenda, 2020Z 007PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 14 Planning Commission meeting. Item 32A, 2020Z 008PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 14 Planning Commission meeting. Item 32B, 6177P 004. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 14 Planning Commission meeting. Item 33A, 2020Z 009PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 14 Planning Commission meeting. Item 33B on page 16 of your agenda, 88P 029001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 14 Planning Commission meeting. Item 34, 2020Z 013PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 14 Planning Commission meeting. Item 35, 2020Z 016PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 23 Planning Commission meeting. Item 36, 2020Z 022PR 001. Staff recommendation is to withdraw. Item 38 on page 17 of your agenda, 2020Z 028PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 23 Planning Commission meeting. Item 39, 2020Z 029PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 23 Planning Commission meeting. Item 40, 2020Z 037PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item 42A, 2020Z 042PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 23 Planning Commission meeting. Item 42B, 10981P 005. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 23 Planning Commission meeting. Item 43 on page 18 of your agenda, 2020Z 043PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 14 Planning Commission meeting. Item 47A, 2020 CP 012002. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 14 Planning Commission meeting. Item 47B on page 19 of your agenda, 2020Z 046PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 14 Planning Commission meeting. Item 48A, 2020 CP 014001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 14 Planning Commission meeting. Item 48B, 2020Z 050PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 14 Planning Commission meeting. Item 49, 2018 S 209001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 23 Planning Commission meeting. Item 52 on page 20 of your agenda, 2019 Z 015TX 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to April 23 Planning Commission meeting. Item 53, 2020Z 006TX 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 23 Planning Commission meeting. And item 54, 2020Z 007TX 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 23 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Lisa. We appreciate that. Commissioners, you've heard the items, but let's go through these, and then Lisa will let me know if they're correct. So we have the items, or any commissioners, let me know if I'm off. So we have the items for deferral, withdraw, and I'll go through this slowly, are as follows. Item 1A, 1B, 2A, 2B, 5A, 5B, 6, 7, 11, 14, 15, 16A, 16B, 17, 20, 21, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 31, 32A, 32B, 33A, 33B, 34, 35, 36, 38, 39, 40, 42A, 42B, 43, 47A, 47B, 48A, 48B, 49, 52, 53, and 54. Is that correct, Lisa?
That is correct.
Thank you, commissioners. You've heard the items for deferral, withdraw. Is there a motion? Raise your icon hand on your platform. And we have Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Chairman. Before I make a motion, may I ask one clarifying question?
Yes.
Item number 7, 2018 SP dash 027 dash 001. I believe Counsel Lady Lee requested this item to be deferred, but I thought it was much further than April 23rd. I just wanted to make sure. I don't know if we can defer to April 23rd, and then maybe we can defer again if Counsel Lady Lee needs more time, but I just wanted to check with the staff before I make motion.
Lisa?
Certainly, that item was to be deferred on the, up to July 23rd, as reflected on the most recent agenda that we sent out. Thank you.
Are there, we'll need a motion.
So I make a motion to defer all those items stated?
That's a proper motion. Counsel Lady Murphy?
Thank you.
Would you like to second? We'll need a second. Is there, if you could raise, Counsel Lady Murphy, are you? Counsel?
Yeah, I was seconding.
Oh, thank you. Perfect. And that's a proper motion. Is there any other discussion on the deferral or withdrawal items? Is there any discussion? Oh, and also, I want to add that Commissioner Vice, Vice Chair Farr, are you on the line? And you heard the consent items?
I did.
Perfect, thank you, Vice Chair. I want to make sure everybody knew she was on the line, present during the deferral items. So, any other discussion? If you'll raise your icon hand, and I don't see, or let us know by voice. Seeing no discussion, we will do roll call. So on the roll call, we have Vice Chair Farr.
I approve, aye.
Aye. Commissioner Gobble?
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Counsel Lady Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye, aye.
Perfect, and there are eight ayes and no nays, and the motion for those to defer has been approved. We are now on to the item G on the agenda, which is the consent agenda items. And so I believe Lisa is also going to do the consent items. Lisa?
Yes, that is correct. We have the following items for consent. Item 3A, 2020 CP 007001. The West Nashville Community Plan Amendment. Request to amend the West Nashville Community Plan by changing the policy from T4NE to T4NC for properties located along Vernon and West Robertson Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. The associated case, item 3B, 2020 SP 016PR 001. The 6100 Robertson Avenue SP. It's a request to rezone from RA to SP for properties located on Robertson and Vernon Avenue to permit a mixed-use development. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item 4A, 2020 CP 008001. The North Nashville Community Plan Amendment. It's a request to amend the North Nashville Community Plan by changing from District Industrial to T4 mixed-use policy for property located along Adams Street and Cement Plant Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. The associated case, item 4B, 2020 SP 009001, Modera Germantown. It's a request to rezone from IG to SP for property located on Adams Street to permit a mixed-use development. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Moving on to page 10 of your agenda, item number 8, 2019 SP 005001, 218 Maplewood Trace. It's a request to rezone from RS10 to SP for property located at 218 Maplewood Trace to permit 48 multifamily residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item 9, 2020 SP 003001, Eagle Point. It's a request to rezone from SP to SP for property located on Una Antioch Pike to permit 51 multifamily units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 10, 2020 SP 011001, Union Brick Multifamily SP. It's a request to rezone from IR to SP for property located on 14th Avenue North and 12th Avenue North to permit a mixed-use development with up to 390 multifamily residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 12, 2020 SP 013001, Kennedy Avenue SP. It's a request to rezone from CS to SP for properties located on Kennedy Avenue to permit a mixed-use development. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. On page 11 of your agenda, item number 13, 2020 SP 014001, 5978 Edmondson Pike. It's a request to rezone from AR2A to SP for property located on Edmondson Pike to permit eight single-family residential lots and two duplex lots for a total of 12 units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. On page 12 of your agenda, item 18, 2020 S 030001, the Cheryl Moon subdivision. It's a request for final plat approval to create two lots on property located on Hester Beasley Road. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including approval of variances to lot size and lot width requirements. Item 19, 2020 S 037001, 333 McKennel Drive Concept Plan. It's a request for concept plan approval to create eight single-family lots and two duplex lots for a total of 12 units for properties located on McKennel Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. On page 13 of your agenda, item 22, 2020 S 060001, Villages by the Creek. The request for concept plan approval to create 58 lots on property located on Brick Church Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item 23, 2020 S 062001. A re-subdivision of a portion of Lot 7 on the subdivision of Lot 27 and 28 in the Dixie Pure Food subdivision. The request for final plat approval to create five lots for property located on Snow Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. On item 14 of your agenda, item number 29, 16373P 001. The Bellevue Village Chase Revision. It's a request to revise the planned unit development for property located on Highway 70 South to permit a financial institution. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 30, 2019 Z 162PR 001. It's a request to rezone from R10 to MULA for property located on Old Lebanon Dirt Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. On item 16 of your agenda, item 37, 2020Z 024PR 001. It's a request to rezone from RS7.5 to R8A for property located on Bradner Street. Staff recommendation is to approve. On item, on page 17 of your agenda, item 41, 2020Z 041PR 001. It's a request to rezone from CS to MULANs for property located on Duke for property located on Duke Street and Dickerson Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve. On item eighteen of your agenda, item forty-four, twenty twenty Z, zero four five P R zero zero one. It's a request to rezone from R S five to R six A for property located on East Moreland Street. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. On item forty-five, twenty twenty Z, zero four eight P R zero zero one. The request to rezone from R S ten to R ten for property located on Hillside Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item forty-six, twenty twenty Z, zero four nine P R zero zero one. It's a request to rezone from R S seven point five to R six A for property located on Tony Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. On page nineteen of your agenda, item fifty, twenty twenty Z, zero four four P R zero zero one. A request to rezone from R S five to R six for property located on Weekly Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. On page twenty of your agenda, item fifty-one, twenty twenty Z, zero five three P R zero zero one. A request to rezone from C N to R M twenty-eight for property located on Twenty-Fourth Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to approve. And under other business, item fifty-eight, to accept the Director's report.
Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate that. So, the items on the consent agenda, I'll read them slow. And Lisa, if you'll say, let me know if any of these are incorrect and/or the Commissioners. So, the items on consent agenda are items three A, three B, four A, four B, eight, nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-seven, forty-one, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-eight. Is that correct, Lisa?
That's correct.
Perfect. So Commissioners, you've heard the items on the consent agenda. And before we vote on this, is, is, do we know of any objections by anyone? And I want to ask the Director, or Sean, who's down at the Planning Commission building. Are there any objections or anybody wanting to pull any of these off the consent agenda?
Chairman, this is Sean Shepherd in the Sunny West Conference Center. There are no members of the public present to speak to these items.
All right. Now, let's move on to the Commissioners. And we have Commissioner Johnson, do you have a question?
Yes, it's not objections, several questions on several items, mostly clarifying questions.
Okay. Lisa will answer these for me, I think.
So, if I may, if you would indulge, start with item number four B. Let's see. If four B, twenty twenty S P dash zero zero nine zero zero one, Modera Germantown. I think this is a well-thought-out, very ambitious plan, and I've never seen such a detailed street plan, a traffic parking recommendation, and so forth. My couple of concern is building material, because this area, it happened to be like a tornado pathway. So, because of this calibre of development, by the time they are ready to move on to development, they will be really conscientious about material and foundation and so forth. But I just wanted to make it sure those are included and discussed into the condition.
Lisa?
There are standards included in the, there are standards included on, for architecture and for building materials as well. It limits the amount of cementous siding per facade, but I will also note that they will have to make all building, all adopted building codes.
That would be great. And especially, just wanted to make it sure, because it happened to be the historical pathway of the tornado. So, who, when it comes to development and building standard, whomever take up on this great project will be very conscientious about it. So, if you can kind of note of it, that'd be great. And one more question is, Green Network and Greenway. And I think it looks like it end at the north, far north end of this development. I'm assuming it's not going to go any farther, considering the next property is cement plant. So, am I reading it right? Or do you have plan to go through all the way alongside of the Cumberland River?
No. So, typically, what is required of development when it becomes, when it comes to Greenways is that they are required to dedicate easements for Greenways. However, this only for their portion of the property. However, this developer is actually going beyond that general requirement and is actually constructing the Greenway on their property, which goes beyond what is generally required. They are not building offsite, but they are building the actual Greenway on their property.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought I read. So, since it's going to be Greenway, it's accessible to the public, correct?
The planning includes requirements for access easement, yes.
Great. Oh, thank you. So, now I will move on to next item. That will be item number eight. So, that is twenty nineteen S P dash zero five five zero, zero zero one. I think it was deferred multiple times, and seems like this is, again, well-thought-plan, you know, facing across from existing street is have better transition and then higher density kind of sandwiched inside of the newly development area. Do, so since we are not receiving any public comment, so all the public was engaged and have community support for that plan. So, my only, you know, concern is quite a bit of density jump, but considering right next property is a church building and so forth, so that would be appropriate density for that property. But wanted to make it sure you do, you have no awareness of public opposition or anything like that.
The number of deferrals was related to a more detailed traffic analysis that was required, not related to opposition from the public. The policy is neighborhood-evolving. They are providing for transition. And no, we are not aware of any opposition.
Okay.
I'd like to just clarify here. This is Lucy. If we were aware of opposition, we were telling the applicant to defer to the second meeting of April. That was a state name guidance that we gave for this particular meeting.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
The council member also wanted me to include, I was getting a message from her, that there have been two meetings, and she is supportive of the development.
That's great to know. Thank you. Next one is item number nineteen. That is twenty twenty S dash zero three seven dash zero zero one. That is a, I believe, subdivision. And I think in that open space, there is a T V A. The existing overhead transmission tower is, you know, currently in place, and I'm sure it's not going to go anywhere. So, just want to make it sure we do have adequate easement and, you know, public new subdivision has far away from existing this transmission tower. And we, as a commission, do not have to worry about, you know, safety and safety hazard or nothing like that. So, it's well-protected.
The subdivision has proposed meets all of the requirements of the subdivision regulations.
Okay. One more thing is, the new access street is running through existing, you know, neighborhood of Howard Drive. So, it seems like a new street is created backyard of this, you know, existing neighborhood. But I did not see any, like, tree buffer or, you know, landscaping buffer to shield from existing subdivision neighborhood. Would that be added condition, or am I missing?
Lisa?
It was actually planned this way purposely. It's not a road, it's a private drive. It is along the road, the, the back of the lots at front on Farwood. Those are D lots, and it was intended in this way so that in the future, there may be a possibility for those lots to actually utilize that same private drive. But the drive is up against the, the back of the lot. There, there's not a requirement for any sort of landscape separation.
I see. So, that private road to come to new subdivision is do not have a certain landscape buffer, tree density requirement, but so it, for the future development? So, it can be?
The subdivision itself will have to meet tree density standards, but there's not a required buffer between the private driveway and the adjacent lot.
Okay. So, since, you know, this is subdivision, and it's not going to go to council, so I have not seen any opposition or any request regarding this subdivision. But I thought it would be, as a regular neighbors, it would be nice to have little, you know, tree in between the private road and back of their existing neighborhood. So, would that be something we can consider? Or just, you know, we just straightforward, since it's meets subdivision regulation, there's no tool for us to require those kind of little buffer?
As a bit of history, when this subdivision first came to us, the private drive was actually on the opposite side of the property.
I see.
So, if you flip the plan. The reason that the private drive has moved where it was is because the applicant has actually worked with the neighbors and with the council member to get this plan, which is the plan that is supported by the community.
Okay. Great. That's great to know. Thank you. So, two more. Item number forty-one, which is twenty twenty Z dash zero four one P R dash zero zero one. And I think we received a comment from public support of this development, but they want to have permanent resident or instead of short-term rental. I just wanted to comment, because this is a new, newly-created zoning designation, M U L A N S. So, that is precisely accomplish, you know, prohibiting short-term rental property on this parcel. So, I think this is a great usage of new zoning district. So, I just want, you know, give command, planning staff working hard to create this new zoning, and also, you know, kudos to council member who created and utilize it now. So, my last question is item number forty-five. This is twenty twenty Z dash zero four eight P R dash zero zero one. Existing zoning is R S ten, and then proposed zoning is R ten. And I think stuff, analysis, you know, page two oh one says, existing zoning, R S ten would permit a maximum of ten units. And then proposed zoning will, would permit maximum seven lots with one duplex lots for a total of eight units. However, the traffic and parking recommendation analysis says, existing R S ten would be seven unit, and but proposed R ten zoning will be fourteen unit. So, could you give, clarify, is it going to be seven to eight unit or seven to fourteen unit?
Would you mind, Commissioner, clarifying what number? I didn't hear the number that you were referring to. This is Lucy.
Okay. So, page two oh one of staff report says existing zoning. Yeah, R S ten would permit a maximum of seven units. And then below that, it says proposed zoning, R ten would permit a maximum of seven lots with one duplex lots for a total of eight units. So, in this, you know, page two oh one, it looks like existing R S ten to R ten is only change is one unit. But if you go to next page, you know, traffic parking recommendation and traffic, you know, analysis, it says, you know, one point seven acre, you know, fire density, four point three five six D, and then total floor unit, floor area lots unit is seven unit. And then below that, proposed zoning, R ten, says fourteen unit.
Yeah, it's the, it's actually, it's not fourteen. That, so that was, that's a typo. That's the thing, that all lots could be duplexes, but our zoning, or our zoning code has limitations on the number of lots in a new subdivision that can be duplexes, and so all seven would not be able to be duplexes. So, it is the number that's given in the top part of the report.
Okay. So, the first page, seven units to eight units is the correct transition?
Correct.
Okay. Great. No further question. I do appreciate your indulgence.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your thorough analysis. And I'm glad that you're reading the materials. That's great. I, we are on the consent agenda, and we will need a motion to get it properly in front of us. We'll need a motion to adopt the consent agenda. And y'all heard the, the numbers earlier. And so, we'll need a motion to do that. And so, Commissioner Johnson, you want to make a motion? I see your icon hand raised.
Thank you, Chair. I make a motion to adopt all consent agenda.
That's a proper motion. And is there a second? Vice Chair Farr?
I'll second. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If you guys will let me know by voice or raising your icon hand on your device. And seeing none, we'll do a roll call. So, on the consent agenda, Vice Chair Farr?
Aye.
Commissioner Gobble?
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Council Lady Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
Eyes have it. And that is eight for, none against. And the consent agenda is adopted. We are on, and I want to thank everyone for working on the meeting. And we are now on to, let's see here, the other business, around items I, which is other business. And is there anything from Commissioner? And is there anything from Commissioner Tibbs on historic zoning commission?
No report.
All right. And Commissioner Haynes, any, anything on the parks, Board of Parks and Recreation?
No report.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Executive Committee, the vice chair and I really appreciate everyone for working through this during the coronavirus. And, you know, I think the director's going to talk about this a little bit, but just working through and trying to make this an appropriate process, a transparent process, one that both the public knows, the public knows that we are a very open and transparent organization, and we strive for that every day. I'd argue we're one of the most transparent agencies, commissions within Metro. So we strive for that during these times, crisis, sometimes, you know, we have to go to extreme measures. And so the director and I, and the vice chair and I take this very, very seriously. So I want to say, Vice Chair, you want to add anything?
That is fine. All good. Thank you.
Good deal. So now we're on to the director's report. Lucy? Director Kemp?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for those comments. I just wanted to take a moment again to thank the ITS team who supported the meeting, this meeting, and thank all of you for learning this new technology and tackling it. We've, you know, are conducting a meeting today that focuses on consent items. The next meeting on 4/23, we are taking step by step a, an analysis with our technology, information technology services team, and consulting with our legal department to understand what our capabilities are for running this meeting and running Planning Commission meetings in the future. And we're learning a lot from our peer cities who are grappling with the very same things that we are. And we are exploring a number of different options for encouraging more public engagement. And, and we are, as the chairman said, balancing the need for transparency and access from the public with, you know, the need to protect ourselves and protect the public as well. And so we're looking for a range of ways that we can hear cases and invite public input. And so in the coming weeks, I will be reaching back out to you with additional information about how we are approaching those meetings. And I just, I wanted to thank you for your patience and your guidance and let you know that more is forthcoming. So that's it. That concludes my report. Oh, and I do want to also just acknowledge that the staff in the department have been working so hard. If it takes us twice as long to go through, you know, the first steps of our meeting, it's taking many of them twice as long to do everyday tasks. And so learning patience, but also trying to figure out the right tools to use is just something that they're grappling with every day, and they're doing an outstanding job. I just, land development, the team that sits before you and puts these cases together is, is working very hard to make sure that we're tracking all of the cases, that we're getting public input, and we're working with council members, all in a time when communication is so important, but it's happening differently. And so I just want to commend the whole team for their, for their patience and their, their work effort. So with that, Chairman, thank you for the indulgence.
Thank you, Director Kemp. I, I want to extend our thanks from the commission to the staff team. You guys are awesome. You work your hearts out. You really care about the city, and I can't, we can't thank you enough. And, and even, you know, all of I, ITS Department, the Planning Commission, the, our staff attorneys, they're all doing an awesome job during this uncertain time. Are there any questions of the director? I want to make sure we, we've answered them. If we, Commissioner Sims, are you, are you seeking recognition?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Sims, you're recognized.
I just want to echo what you guys are saying about thank you, but also want to assure anybody that's listening in from the public, how very open that the director is and our chair is and the whole commission to hearing your suggestions to the public about how we can better hear your voice during this time. And Director Kemp, I want to thank you so much for the incredible work you and your staff have done to make sure that the community's voices are being heard and that we're exploring every option. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Sims. Are there any other questions? We want to make sure everybody gets, if you'll raise your icon hand on your device or by voice. All right. Seeing none, we have Council Lady, legislative update?
Don't have much to update. We had our meeting, this is our first web meeting this week, and it was, it was interesting. But I do think that we are doing a good job on the planning side of, of holding these meetings and being successful. And so I appreciate that. We just still have some more work to do on the council side.
All right. Well, keep us posted. We really appreciate your help, and thank you for being our, our representative on the council. We appreciate that. Commissioners, Director, do we have anything else on other business? Are you good?
I do not. I'm good. I just wish everybody a safe weekend, weekend.
All right. And let's ask our, our legal representative, Kwan. Is there anything else? Are we doing this appropriately?
A plus.
A plus? Whoa. He's never given us an A plus, guys. This is good. Thank you, Kwan. All right. So is there a motion to adjourn? And there's a motion. Seeing no objection, we're adjourned. See everybody later.
Aye.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.